Okay, I'll try to juggle with the language. Try to switch languages so that I can reach both the people. If then you want to reach out on K. I see a lot of kids sitting here, so I thought I should minister to them. I should not neglect them. So, anybody who is above maybe seven or eight should be able to get something out of this. Okay, that's what I thought. Actually, when I came here, I thought of a different message but after seeing, ah. If the kids are below seven, you can take them, all above seven, you leave them here. Pardon? We've heard the language. Ah, right, thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. The topic I have chosen is bit odd for the season. This season has not been subject, but I thought I should take it. Because I wanted to reach out to them, I wanted to minister to them and also to the parents. So, basically, I'll be speaking to the kids and the parents of the kids. Okay? See, we have four gospel writers. Matthew, Mark, Luke and John. Among these four gospel writers, they gave us the birth narrative of Jesus Christ. We call it as Christmas season every time we discuss. But I'm bringing it to this context. In America, I don't know whether you heard it or not, Christmas in July. I wanted to bring that back, Christmas in July. Okay? So, I want to look at the Christmas in a different perspective. I think only two writers, that is Matthew and Luke, has given to us the Christmas narrative, or Jesus' birth narrative. We know that Matthew is a Jew and Yiddish Jew, and he was predominantly writing to the Jewish community. So, because Jewish community has a scripture, which we call it as Old Testament, so he wanted to write. Like in Jewish scriptures, there are over 300 prophecies regarding Messiah. So, what he did was, he took about 60 or prophecies. He presented the life of Jesus Christ. And he wanted to basically present Jesus as the son of David and the king we are expecting. God promised David in 2 Samuel, chapter 7, "A son will sit on the throne and his kingdom will be eternal." So, that is Matthew. Whereas Luke is a Gentile, and he was writing to the public in general. But he will predominantly write from geographical perspective, historical perspective. So, these are the two we have. I think because Matthew is writing to the Jewish community, so in a father perspective, Father is Jesus Christ's foster father, Joseph. So, Joseph is highlighted. So, if you read Matthew 1 and 2, you find much about Joseph and very little about Mary. That is about Matthew. Whereas Luke, actually, he is not writing. So, we find much about Mary and very less about Matthew in Luke 1 and 2. You got it? So, Matthew's genealogy is predominantly about Joseph. Luke's genealogy is predominantly about Mary. David had a son by name Solomon. He had another son by name Nathan. So, there are 27 generations. So, if you go 27 generations back, they will come back. So, that is how the brief background is. So, what I wanted to do is today, I want to look at Joseph. See, Joseph, as I told you, we find in Matthew 1 and Matthew 2. Now, what I can do is, half part I will do in detail, second part I'll just give an outline and leave it for your personal study. Okay? So, that is what I'm planning to do. So, if you have your Bibles, open with me to Matthew, chapter 1, verse 18, we get into these details. Okay? I'll be reading and we'll look at it. Now, the birth of Jesus Christ took place in this way. When his mother Mary had been betrothed to Joseph, before they came together, she was found to be with child from the Holy Spirit. And her husband Joseph, being a just man and unwilling to put her to shame, resolved to divorce her quietly. See, when you are studying Bible, when you are meditating upon Bible, when you are reading Bible, we have to become more or less like a student. We need to definitely ask. And if we dwell upon them a little, we get all the details. Remember one thing, unlike other religious books, Bible is written in such a way that common man can understand. The only thing that is expected from us is a desire to know. So, that is the reason I want to address this typical issue or a critical issue to the kids. If they are able to understand this, how beneficial, how important it is. But let me make one statement, stunning statement about Joseph. Joseph, we have two complete chapters, Matthew 1 and 2. Both these chapters, predominantly, Joseph. Though two chapters have been earmarked for this man Joseph, Joseph never opened his mouth in the Bible. In the Bible, Joseph never said anything. In Christmas narratives, there are dialogues between Mary, widows, wise men, hearers, innkeeper. But Joseph's dialogue is not there. But in the scriptures, we don't have in the scriptures. Joseph never spoke a word. Joseph is a man of action rather man of words. So, we can learn a lot from this man Joseph. In these two verses, we come across words that are little bit contradictory. It appears they cannot fit together. Kids who are living in the Western culture may not understand this word betrothal. The whole world is divided into two segments, Eastern culture, Western culture. Somewhere along the line of Rome, East is Eastern culture, West is Western culture. People, that's how they think. Okay? Now, in Eastern culture, marriage has three. Number one is engagement. Number two is betrothal. Number three is wedding. Whereas in the Western culture, we have probably only two, engagement and then wedding. That's how the Western mindset is. Remember, this Christmas narrative or Jesus' birth narrative happened in the Eastern culture. So, they have all the three. Indians' Christmas is different, Western people's. It somehow syncs with us. Engagement, betrothal and marriage. So, engagement, in this present context. When a boy or girl comes to a marriageable age, the parents say, "I will marry you, will you marry me?" That is called engagement. In Eastern culture, betrothal is preparing the bride for the wedding. Usually, a day before, a few hours before wedding. Then, the marriage takes place. Jewish culture, they have all these three, but the timing is little bit different. Mostly, Jewish culture, when there were kids, like before they reached seven years, it's not a big deal. Recently, a law has been passed to stop child marriages. But still, if you go to the rural areas of Rajasthan and that part of the world, they have the engagements when the kids are in the crib. So, before 13, 14 years, they start. So, don't be surprised when I say that in a Jewish community, don't think otherwise. So, Mary and Joseph might have been engaged when they were kids. The second thing is betrothal. Usually, when the girl reaches puberty. Usually, 11 to 14 is the window where a girl reaches puberty. They wait for one year. So that she may be physically fit and then they can go for it. But there is another condition. The condition is, if the boy is doing high school, they will wait till the boy finishes his high school. So, usually, they will finish the high school at about 17. So, let us take all the permutations, combinations, and it will be something like this. When the Christmas narrative begins, Joseph probably should be around 17 and Mary probably around 15. Do you understand now? Do you understand? So, at that age, they are handling one of the toughest challenges of their life. How they could take it? How they were able to handle such a tough challenge in their life? What made them to handle that? How can we prepare our kids to face challenges in their lives? Kids, how you can live a life that is pleasing unto God even at that age? So, to parents' and to kids' study, this study of Joseph, study of Mary, it helps. And I thought of taking it. That is the reason I took it. Because you, particularly your parents, you have grown up in the Eastern culture, but you are raising your children in the Western culture. You go through a lot of trauma. You go through a lot of conflict. So, how can we handle it? How we can raise our kids within the American culture but in a way that God is well pleased? How is it possible? So, that is what I want to bring out from the study of this character called Joseph. So, Joseph is 17 years old and Mary is 15 years old, that's presumed like that. And the betrothal is taking place. In Jewish culture, your wife and husband. But they will put some conditions. But till that year, you have to be very careful. You can't come close. You can't have any kind of intimacy. But still, you are called wife and husband. Why should you call me husband? And why should you put all these limitations? You call me husband only at the time of wedding. No, 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 we will call you now. But we will put you these limitations. Why? Basically, for two reasons. One is the test of perseverance and the second one is the test of purity. What happens if they trespass? Let me ask. After betrothal, what happens if Mary and Joseph have come close to each other? The punishment is both of them will be dragged out and stoned to death. Got it? Stone to death. That's it. So, it's life and death. They will be very careful. So, in those conditions, the two reasons, test of perseverance. They were taught to wait. They were taught to wait. Patience. They have to wait till the right time. In spite of having all the possibilities, they have to wait. How good it is to teach our children to wait? I know most of your parents and also the kids, you have this struggle. Because we are living in a world where patience is completely gone out. I'll give you an example. I know my grandmother. I know my grandmother. My father's mother. And she used to make coffee. I'm speaking about 1972, 73. She used to make coffee. And it used to take at least 40 to 50 minutes to make one glass of coffee. She used to drink in a glass, not in a cup. We never had a cup. We only had glass, that took very big glass. And it used to take 40 to 50 minutes to make a glass of coffee. In those days, we only had firewood. So, firewood, then she has to put a dish, then water. We never used sugar, we used jaggery. So, jaggery bits, it should dissolve, it used to take time. Then, water boiled. It used to take time, 20, 25 minutes. Then, coffee powder, now there is no fire, only hot coal. You have to leave it for 20 minutes. In those days, we never had filter. So, the coffee should go down and the water should be, clear water should be there, coffee on the top. It used to take 40 to 50 minutes and we used to wait. But today? That's it? You don't know how to wait. You don't know how to wait. I think in some ways, India is far better than America. Why? Let me give you one example. I'm sure, because I checked with other people. You don't have a concept called blinket. You don't have. You have Uber, you have Ola, you have Lyft, but you don't have blinket. But in India, we have blinket. It's an app called blinket. Okay, let me tell you what is blinket. Guys, if I say anything, I'll explain. Don't look at your mom or dad. I'm here. Okay? Just wait, that's the problem, man. Just wait for a minute, I'll tell you. This guy can't wait for two seconds. The moment he tells mommy, what is blinket? That's what he asks questions. See, we are living in that kind of world. Because our kids don't allow us even to finish the sentence. Because in a sentence, if there is a word in the first three words, they will stop you there and say, "What is it?" In such a situation, you need to teach your children how to be patient. How to wait. So, blinket is, it's an app. Blink, you know that, blinking with an eye? What they mean is this, if your area is covered by blinket, anything you order, it will come to you within 300 seconds, five minutes. I tried once, like this. I was taking bath and I just came out of the bath, I was in a hotel. And I was using the towel to dry my body. Suddenly, I realized I forgot my comb. I used the blinket and asked for a comb. Before I dried my body, the fellow was there outside saying the comb is there. That's blinket. So, we can't wait. We want everything. If I have a desire, it should be fulfilled immediately. But these guys were taught to wait. And what is the punishment if they can't wait? Death. So, how critical it is. If you are able to teach your children to wait, half the problems are solved. Am I right or wrong? So, these are the basics I want to tell you. You have to tell them very coolly, there is a beauty in waiting. There is a beauty in waiting. So, that is what we have to do. Number one. Number two is purity. Purity, we want to test your purity, whether you will be holding on to it or not. Whether you will be obedient to us or not. So, that is what. So, this is the second important thing we miss in our children. Purity in the sense, it's not only outside but also inside. So, in such a situation, Joseph and Mary, they are called wife and husband. That's why we found the word wife and husband. Though they were not married. You got it? Got it? So, Mary and Joseph, they are like that. And this is how God is introducing Joseph to us. Joseph, before they came together, she was found to be with child from the Holy Spirit. And her husband Joseph, being a just man. This is another word I want to look at it, just man. Kids, listen to it. What do you mean by just man? Remember, Joseph is not a guy with a beard and a white beard and an old fellow. He's 17-year-old fellow. Got it? He is in the high school. And God is giving a certificate, not any other human being. God is giving a certificate that Joseph is a just man. Why he was called so? Who is a just man? Simple concept. Whatever you know, whatever you understood, if you follow it, you are called just. If you don't know, if you don't understand, don't worry. If you don't know, if you don't understand, don't worry. If you know something, if you understood something, you just fulfill it. You understand? We try to gain more knowledge and thereby we are making our question paper more difficult. Do you understand? That is why James said, "Don't become a preacher." Because my question paper will be tough. You understand? That's the reason, you know, when Moses was asked to go and talk to the rock, when he did not talk to the rock, God became so angry, he killed him. So, please try to understand. So, based on that, what I try to explain to you is, don't worry about knowledge, worry about obedience. How much I am able to apply in my life? So, if a person is able to apply whatever he knew, that is called a just man. Very interesting. One day, God comes to Nova and says, "Hey Nova, yes Lord, what can I do for you? Can you see that ground, little elevated and flat? Yes Lord, from tomorrow, you have to do a favor from me. Yes Lord, what should I do? You have to build an ark for me, man." Definitely, Lord. A very simple thing is okay, no? Basically, you want to make a museum. No, 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 it's not a museum. Basically, you want to make an exhibition piece. No, no, it's not an exhibition piece. It's real. It's going to float on the water. Don't be crazy, Lord. The nearest ocean is about 500 miles. And why do you want an ark here? It must be only a fun thing. No, no, man, it's real. It's real. What do you mean, you're going to bring the ocean here? No, 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 I'm going to bring water. From there, you're going to bring? Yeah, I'll tell you. Where from you get water? Yes Lord, we get water from the spring. We get water from the spring. Now, I'm going to teach you a new word. You can write it in your dictionary. Tell me, Lord. Now, write this name, word. What is it called, Lord? It's called rain. Oh, it's a new word. Great. What is rain means? Rain means water will come from above. How can water will come from above? It will come, man. Hey, will the water be there? Yeah. How much water will be there? So much water. If I open the tap, it will fill the whole earth. What? Yeah. It's called rain. Now, what I want to say is this, Nova never saw rain in his life. Nova never knew what rain looks like. Nova heard from the Lord that God is going to send water from above. That's it. Now, he believed that, he trusted God, and he took nearly 100 or little over 100 years to build the ark. And all these 100 years, people were ridiculing him. His least bother. My friends, what I'm trying to say is, when you read the word of God, if you have understood something, you follow it even though your friends are bullying you. Do you understand now? Joseph was able to do it. Nova was able to do it. Daniel was able to do it. When Daniel was following the Lord, he was hardly 15 years old. Just 15 years old. When Samuel was following the word of God, he might be around 13 years old. When Joseph in the Old Testament was obliging to God, he was hardly 17 years old. Do you know why I'm giving so many examples? I'm giving all these examples because you kids think that spirituality comes only when I become old. It has to start at this age. Do you know why? Please listen to me. If you don't teach, the world will teach. Any issue. Any issue. If you don't teach, the world teaches. If the world's teaching goes into the soul first, to remove it, you have to struggle a lot. So, before the world teaches, you need to teach your child. What are the things you need to teach? Maybe by the time they reach five years, they have to honor their gender. I'm a girl, God loves me as a daughter. I'm a girl, my mom and dad loves me as a daughter. If you don't teach that, honoring their gender, do you know what will happen? My friends, I'm, I'm telling you something very serious, very practical. And that is what you have to do. The other day, I was in Los Angeles. So that, that man has two daughters, so he's the, he's the, he's driving and I was sitting there. I got shocked, I looked back, both are daughters. I went to the meeting and I came back, and they said, can you come? Why did you call your daughter? That is the problem man, tomorrow she will become tomboy. Don't laugh, don't laugh, I'm serious, I'm serious. Because of our foolishness, we are losing our kids. Because we are not doing things in the right time, we are losing our kids. My friends, if you are not careful, we are sure the next generation is gone. Gone. You have to now doubly ensure that you love your daughter as daughter, not as son. You already gave a picture that my daddy doesn't like a daughter, likes a son. Why should you create that? So before the world teaches, you need to teach. So teaching. Before your child reaches third grade or fourth grade, you have to speak about sexual purity. Your children goes to Sunday's, your kindergarten, at the time of kindergarten, you have to teach about the good touch and bad touch. You understand? I don't know whether, what is happening here, in India we are teaching that. You are bound to teach, you are bound to teach, you are bound to shit with your kids and do that. Joseph was a just man at the age of seventeen because whatever he understood, whatever he knew, he obeyed. The certificate came from God. He will definitely say, Joseph is just guy, because whatever he knew, he obliges us. Now the immediate question comes, and unwilling to put up to shame, resolved to divorce her quietly. Sir, if you say he is just, why he is divorcing her? He is following Jutron 24. Jutron 24, first four verses. If you are married and if you found that your wife after marriage is not a virgin, and she has an kind of an illicit relation with somebody, the rule is this, he has to pick up that lady, go to the father and say, I'm so sorry, she doesn't have virginity and I have to give her. So that is following the law, that is why he is just. I have to follow it. We need to teach our children to obey the word of God. Why? Why? If you don't give an answer, they will definitely go. And for everything, if you give answer, tomorrow if you are not able to answer something, they will have a question. Therefore, you have to make them understand one thing, there are certain things I can't explain, you have to just oblige. So if you trust me, you just follow it. That is what it is. So Joseph was. This is what is important, my friends. Okay, so we have to teach our kids this most important thing, Joseph is like that. So we have got the background of Joseph, now here is the most important thing, action. We are now coming to the action, from twentieth verse, I'll read up to twenty fourth and then I'll come back. But as he considered these things, considered these things. He came to know that Mary is um pregnant, so he decided to leave her silently, he was just thinking, contemplating. This is one issue, he cannot discuss with anybody. My friends, this is another important thing, the whole struggle of Joseph, Joseph had to face it all alone. My friends, you need to teach your children to take challenges in their life. Let me tell you one thing, the huge challenge your kids can go, the huge challenge, this is common to all your kids. Do you know what is the common thing? Your kids, they might be born here, or they might have learned the American slang. They go to school, they speak the American slang. So when they, when you hear them speaking, you don't find any difference between them and the Americans. Fine, fine, but the difference is their skin. Because their skin is different, what the Americans will do is they will put them down. Your kids will go through that struggle whether they tell you or not. Pulling is there. People will put you down, sometimes they don't know how to express it out. Your kids will be going through that, right from kindergarten, right from kindergarten, they go through that. The moment he started, how are you? The moment he looks at you and says something, you know, they are hurt there. Have you ever heard these things? They are rejected there because of sound, they are rejected here because of skin, do you know what they try to do? They try to create their own culture. That is why technically the word that is given to them is third culture kids. They live in midair. They neither belong here, they neither belong there nor belong there. They create their own culture, I dare. E cultural struggle low, let me tell you what happens. E cultural struggle low, many of the kids, you know, because of the peer pressure, because to be identified somewhere. They go to compromise. They go to compromise. What they have if I have, what they do if I do, what they wear if I wear, probably I will be accepted. That's the struggle they go through, sometimes they follow some things which are very dangerous without knowing the meaning of it. Want to give an example, this happened in London, in the month of April, I was there. I, I was in a meeting, one guy was playing guitar, was beautifully leading the worship. So because there were lights like this, I was able to see something which is very, very, very much obvious. To his right ear, he has a stud. Then I thought, what about this side, it's not there. It's not there, only to right here, he has a stud. This is what I said. Now open your laptop, a mobile. Now key these words, key these words and key just, right is wrong, left is right. Key these words, right is wrong, left is right, now read it. I never knew, I never knew. Right is wrong, left is right. When you don't know what they are doing and why they are doing, why you want to follow it? Why you want to follow it man? He wants an identity. He wants an acceptance, your kids are not bothered about your gifts. Your kids are not bothered about your food. Your kids are bothered about acceptance, identity, which the world cannot give. Only parents are supposed to give. Are you able to give that? Are you able to give that? They go through struggles which they cannot share with anybody in this world, anybody in this world. Joseph was going through that kind of struggle. The Bible clearly says, he was contemplating, he was thinking about. Have you understood some of your kids who cross eleven, twelve years, they go into the room always secluded? You have to call them out so many times, do you know why? To take it serious. I don't mean that you have to punish them, I mean you have to sit with them and ask them, why they are going through that kind of loneliness, why they want to be secluded, why they want to be alone? Ultimately, you came to U S for a better life. I'm not saying it's wrong, it's good, but let me tell you one thing, if you don't take these measures, you will not have better life, you have bitter life. Somebody has to tell you man, somebody has to tell you. Now let's see what happened. But as he considered these things, behold, an angel of the Lord appeared to him in a dream, saying, Joseph, son of David, do not fear to take Mary as your wife, for that which is conceived in her is from the Holy Spirit. She will bear a son, and you shall call his name Jesus, for he will save his people from their sins. All this place, all this took place to fulfill what the Lord has spoken by the prophet. Behold, the virgin shall conceive and bear a son, and they shall call his name Emmanuel, which means God with us. This is what, the angel spoke to Joseph. Now what Joseph did? When Joseph woke from sleep, he did as the angel of the Lord commanded him, he took his wife. I can't understand, one dream completely changed this seventeen year old guy. You go to fifty people and finally you say you don't, you did not understand anything. But this guy got only one dream, and in that one dream, this is the conversation that took place, and at the end of the dream, he gets up and he takes his wife. Remember, he is seventeen years old. How could he do that? How could he do that? Seventeen year old Joseph. How could he completely change his thinking pattern? When you look at what angel said, I was able to glean certain things. So I am looking at this text again, okay? First of all, how Joseph was addressed, how Joseph was addressed, look at it. Joseph, son of David. Now if you go back to sixteenth verse, if you go back to sixteenth verse, the same chapter, I'm reading. And Jacob, the father of Joseph, who is the father of Joseph? Jacob. Don't think that Jacob in Genesis, that Jacob, this Jacob, eighteen hundred years gap is there. This fellow is another Jacob, and that Jacob's son is Joseph. But do you know how the angel is calling, addressing Joseph? Joseph, son of David. Why? Why like that? By, by mentioning the name of David, what the angel is trying to bring into the mind of Joseph. There is a thousand year gap between Joseph and David. David lived in thousand twenty B C or something like that. And Joseph is happening this in four B C, something like that. Every Jew remembers three important people, number one is Abraham, number two is Moses, number three is David. Abraham gave them the family, Moses gave them freedom, and David speaks about a kingdom. Abraham, Matthew was trying to write like that only. So the moment the name David is mentioned, what might have triggered in the mind of Joseph? I believe this must be the trigger. God speaks to David and he makes a covenant with David. I am going to make one of your sons to sit on your throne and his kingdom will have no ending. So the moment our David pair chappanga ne, Joseph mind low, oh, is this the fulfillment of the covenant which God is making? So I'm not saying one thing, it's complex. Number one is this, and then, do not fear to take Mary as your wife, for that which is conceived in her is from the Holy Spirit. The moment he hears the word conceived in her is from Holy Spirit. Can he Joseph? Only through some means. Some prophetic verses from Book of Isaiah. Don't you see that in Isaiah sixty one? Probably he remembers that, oh, is he the guy? Is he the guy? Now let's go a little further. She will bear a son, and you shall call his name Jesus, for he will save his people from their sins. The name Jesus. Joshua, you know Joshua? The assistant of Moses. What was his original name? Hosea means salvation. Jehovah is shortened form of Jehovah. Joshua means Yahweh is salvation. So that's the name given to him. And this Joshua, when he entered into the promised land, while he was standing beside the wall of Jericho, was going through that trauma, how I'm going to win against them. There, Jesus Christ before incarnation appeared to him, and it is called Christopherine. I am the commander of the Lord, the one who came there did not say I am the Lord, he said I am the commander of the army of the Lord. That must be Jesus. Jesus meeting Joshua, both are having the same name. Joshua redeemed them into the promised land, Jesus will redeem us into the eternal land. And that's what Hebrews tries to bring to us. So, the word Jesus, anangane, fourteen hundred years back, keltad. David, anangane, thousand years. Isaiah, anangane, seven hundred years. Joshua, anangane, la, the, Jesus, anangane, fourteen hundred years, enakeller, Joseph, he remembers. All this took place to fulfill what the Lord has spoken by the prophet. Behold, the virgin shall conceive and bear a son, and they shall name his, they shall call his name Emmanuel. Remember, like our kids, Joseph also, if he hasn't understood this, would have got up and said, who is Emmanuel? Who is this prophet? Who is David? He would have asked all those questions, but he did not ask those questions because he knew that. Seventeen year old guy. He doesn't have a Bible like your son. He doesn't have a Bible like your son. Like your son, he doesn't have an iPad. Like your son, he doesn't have a mobile. Like your son, he doesn't have a screen like this to read. He has only one thing where he can hear the word of God, that is, sin of. He goes there, and when Rabbi opens the scroll, and he, he reads the word of God, he very closely listens to it, and whatever he understood, he hides it in his soul. Tan hrdhoy, la, das, kontra? And he applies it. Have you taught your kids to hide the word of God in their soul? You're worried about your son's math. You're worried about your son's English. You're worried about your daughter's science. I'm not saying it is bad, but are you worried about your son's soul? Your daughter's soul. Joseph, at the age of seventeen, was able to take one of the toughest challenge. Because he was having the word of God inside him. Devu, ni, vaat, kemu, tanlo, onna, de, ka, bate, David, gurinchipen, na, du, Yeshia, gurinchipen, na, du, Yehoshua, gurinchipen, na, du, va, dhanal, delsa? Therefore, he was willing to accept Mary. Tan, tees, kunet, wanti, cheset, wanti, pani, dan, edur, kunet, wanti, sawal, chadda, de, champa, sarim, olo, they may kill me. But I have to trust this God. My friends, have you given that kind of word to your child? Alant, word is, they will not compromise when they are bullied. They will not compromise when people, when their friends put them under pressure. Kids, I want to tell you, please learn this. You go through a lot of pressures because you don't have the strength to counter it. The strength comes from word of God. Devu, ni, vaat, kemu, nunchi, manaki, shekto, sade. Joseph, at the age of seventeen, if you are able to read Mary, at the age of fifteen, both of them are able to take the toughest challenge. Because they had the word of God. Dean, to me, ka, ardam, o, val. Manap, pillal, yaka, character, bill, chesed, de, intellectualism, kado, spirituality. Spirituality. And the Kene, chadu, man, picham, antla, de. Peep, students are kids who are spiritually dynamic, they will definitely be intellectually strong, because they will obey their teachers. They'll be faithful in their studies. And not only that, the spirit of God will help them to excel in their studies. Now, in this conversation, I want to speak about three things Joseph did, three things. Uh, I'm just visiting these verses again and again. I'm looking at verse twenty-four. When Joseph woke from sleep, he did as the angel of the Lord commanded him, he took his wife. First of all, when Joseph had this dream, the first thing he did was, he want to be obedient. That obedience, please take this statement, obedience is always costly. It's not easy. But disobedience is deadly. Hope you got this. Obedience is costly. Disobedience is deadly. The choice is yours. Joseph wanted to obey, that means he was sacrificial. Na, ku, enni, double, tagal, na, parla. Na, ke, enta, ina, parla. My friends, the, the great characters in the Bible, they were strong when they are kids. Daniel and his friends, they were kids, high school kids, when they said, we don't want to eat that food. David was a high school kid when he was able to go and face Goliath. Samuel was a high school kid when he was inside the temple, living a life that is contrary to the culture at that time. He was not like Hophne Finahas. All these are classic examples, my friends. They were high school kids, or even less than that. Because they were having the word of God. Please, from today, you make it a point that every day, I'm not asking you to read chapters and chapters, read a small paragraph in the Bible. Ask God, Lord, what do you want me to learn from this? Just one small thing, pray. Whatever you have learned, you apply. My friends, I want to tell you one thing, when you have the word of God in you, you will be faithful, you will be excellent in your life. If you like soccer, I want to tell you one thing, to be a very good soccer player, read the word of God. Yeah? There are some great athletes in the world who are excellent because of the word of God. You know about this guy called Eric Little? Eric Little, in nineteen twenty-four, he was participating in Paris Olympics, he was from Scotland. He was hundred meters fellow, and everybody know, knew that he's going to get the gold medal. But once he reached Paris, the Olympic Village, he started meeting fellow guys, and he slowly formed a small club of believers. Every day, they used to pray there, they used to read the word of God. And in one of the meetings, he made a decision, if the hundred meters is slotted to be run at, at the time of the Sunday service, I will not run. I'm not asking you to follow it, but look at the, the kind of commitment they had. He did not run. Harold Abraham's run, uh, at that time, and he got the gold medal. And people ridiculed him. Ni, gawna, matupay, ndara? The whole country is looking for you, looking at you, and you are doing, doing like this? But he is least bothered. And, badi, chokala, de, na? After a couple of days, the manager comes and says, four hundred meter relay, lo, participate, just a one, he never participated, he never got trained, he never even attempted. But he stood there, and he got the gold medal. He got the gold medal. And when he took that gold medal, this is what he said. God made me, God gave me two strong legs to run fast, I'll run for God. That means you play soccer for God, you play cricket for God, you play basketball for God, whatever you do, you do it for the Lord. Don't think that God is restricted to church. And then he said, God gave me a heart to go to China, he went to China as a missionary. You want to know about this man? Watch this movie, Chariots of Fire, it's the life story of this man called Eric Little. My friends, I want to tell you, the word of God will make you an excellent. If you are a singer, you will become an excellent singer. If you are a musician, you will become an excellent musician. If you are an artist, you will become an excellent artist. It's the word of God that make you excellent. Joseph was sacrificial. He said, whatever happens to me, I don't bother, I will follow the, the word of God, I will obey, that's number one. Number two. She will bear a son, and you shall call his name Jesus, for he will save his people from their sins. The second thing what he did was, little bit, very hard to accept. Example. Imagine, I got a child. I have two daughters. So, I got the elder daughter. She is only a couple of days old. One of the pastors is visiting us, pastor, my, ko, chachar. Sir, prayer, chendi, ananda? If the pastor says, I'm going to name her, how do you feel? No, or, na, ku, drup, per, bethad, onke? Who are you, man? Who are you? If I give you a, if you ask for a decision, that's fine. But who are you to name my child? It's something like this, you, you have a puppy as a pet? I look at your puppy and say, can I name your puppy? You feel bad? You got a new book? And I say, can I write my name on that new book, will you accept? No. No. But this angel said, you're going to have a son, but I will give you the name. Do you understand? Ni, kodugupadadu, ade, Mary ke, ni, nistan, peru. That means, authority is with me. You have to submit. My friends, if every parent can understand that you are not the owner of your child, but the steward of your child, your whole perspective will change. One day, you have to give accounts to your owner, that is God. I gave your daughter, I gave you a son, what did you do? Ni, ko, kodugunichana, ni, ko, kuturnichana, inje, sao? What did you do? Parents, you are not owners, I'm not owner. I'm only a steward. And he is the ultimate authority. Joseph was willing to sacrifice. Joseph was willing to submit. And then, I'll be reading verse twenty-five. But knew her not until she had given birth to a son, and he called his name Jesus. The thought now I'm giving is not mine, I copied it. I copied it from a podcast. You know about this man called Neil Armstrong? Who is he? Ah, what did he do? Ah, what is so special about him? Ah, the first guy to go onto the moon, okay? This is what he was telling Neil Armstrong. Everybody speaks like this, wow, what a privilege it is, you are the first guy to go to the moon and bring the mud and all those things. But I want to tell you one thing, I'm jealous of one guy who had the privilege of touch, the first touch. So, I was really astonished what he's going to tell. He narrated it for nearly twenty minutes, but I'm not going to take twenty minutes, I'll finish it in three minutes. This is what he said. Mary and Joseph, probably they moved from Nazareth to Bethlehem, when Mary was in fourth month or fifth month. Probably, because the moment she conceived, she went to Elizabeth for the first three months, that is how the morning sickness is handled there. You got my point? You have to look at these details, man. And when she came back, the census issue came, so they went out. They went to Bethlehem, and Bethlehem is a small village, hardly four hundred people. And none of them know Mary and Joseph, otherwise they would have accepted them into their home. So, one fellow gave an outhouse. And that outhouse has also cattle, hello, you have to live with the cattle, you don't disturb them. After they sleep, if you have place, you sleep. That's how they might have given the instructions. So, Mary and Joseph are living in an outhouse. Joseph is seventeen, Mary is fifteen, and Joseph was a carpenter. He's not a rich carpenter to have a workshop, but a poor carpenter, who is a mobile carpenter. What do you mean by a mobile carpenter? Mobile carpenter will have a wooden trunk, wooden box, in that box will be all the tools, and he will have a rope to hang the wooden trunk, and he will be walking on the road saying, I'm a carpenter, do you have work? I'm a carpenter, do you have work? That's how he shouts on the road, and somebody says, hey, come here, can you mend this chair, can you mend this, uh, cart? And once they do that, you know, they give them little barley, wheat, a cup of olive oil, or little currency. And he works the whole day, comes back in the evening, and gives to Mary, and she cooks food, and they eat. Can you understand what kind of poverty they had to go through? Seventeen and fifteen. Please, please try to understand. Are you going through a tough situation in your life? If you are connected to God, if you have the word of God, you can handle that toughness very easily. Very easily. These guys were able to handle. So, one night, around nine o'clock or ten o'clock, Mary gets up, Joseph, Joseph, get up, what happened? I'm so tired, man. Joseph, please get up. Why? I'm unable to bear, my tummy is hurting. Nak, khadbu, bhaga, no, pika, onda, I don't know what is happening, oh, Mary, what should I do? I don't know what to do, I don't know, Joseph, I don't know. And suddenly, she goes into the labor pain. And the baby is coming out. And this is what Neil Armstrong says. Do you know who was the fellow who helped baby Jesus to come out? It's Joseph. What a privilege it is this guy had to touch the head of Jesus coming out. And when he was having Jesus in his arms, takes him, probably uses the dirty water that is used for the cattle to clean him. And on the eighth day, they go to the temple. The priest asks, what is this fellow's name? Em, per, bethad, oya? Joseph looks at that boy, looks at Mary, probably he puts his hand across Mary, again looks at that boy, and he is the first person in the world, the first person in the world, to look at the baby and say, he shall be called Jesus. He knew the meaning, because the angel said, because he will be saving people. Do you know what Joseph was saying? He is born to my wife, I'm the foster father, but he is my savior. He was sacrificial. He was submissive. And he is the first one to call him savior. What a privilege it is. As I told you, this is the first chapter which I dealt in detail. The second chapter, I'll just give the outline and finish it. Joseph totally had four dreams, one, two, three, four, four. The first dream I, I dealt in detail. Now, I'm going to the second dream. See, Joseph and Mary, they were taking care of Jesus, and slowly Joseph established himself as a carpenter. He has a workshop, probably the varanda is the workshop behind, is their house. Jesus probably is about six or seven months. The wise men have come, given the gifts, and they have gone. I'm reading second chapter, thirteenth verse. Now they had departed, that is the wise man. Behold, an angel of the Lord appeared to Joseph in a dream and said, rise, take the child and his mother, and flee to Egypt, and remain there until I tell you, for Herod is about to search for the child to destroy him. This is how I imagine. Mary might have given milk to Jesus, and she's a little bit tired. And Joseph immediately understood, and jogortnada, mo, Jesus came, tapping Jesus to put to sleep. And he also went to sleep. His hand is on Jesus, and he's sleeping, and suddenly the angel comes and tells, hey, Joseph, this fellow is in danger. What? Herod is planning to kill him. What? You have to immediately get out of here. That's it. He sits, and he's thinking, what should I do? Mary gets up, Joseph, what's happening? Mary, I had a dream. What's the dream? The angel came and told me. What? Herod is planning to kill this fellow. What? And the angel said, we have to immediately leave, immediately, immediately. They don't have lights, they don't have switches. In the middle of the night, look at verse fourteen, and he arose and took the child and his mother by night. By night. It hardly took five or ten minutes. The moment he heard the dream, he got the dream, he gets up, wakes up Mary, very quickly packed things, and in the night, they shifted. By the by, if somebody asks you to go to Chicago, that's fine. But if somebody asks you to go to Illinois? That's very difficult. I hope you understood what I mean. If somebody asks you to go to Vijaywada, that's fine. But if somebody asks you to go to Andhra Pradesh, it's very difficult. If somebody asks you to go to Delhi, that's fine. If somebody asks you to go to India, it's very difficult. Here, the angel said, go to Egypt. It's a country. From Bethlehem, the border of Egypt is about two days walking. From that night, they picked up the child, and they walked out of Bethlehem by the sunrise time. And they walked two days, they reached the border, I don't know how far they went inside. What do I see here is implicit obedience. Kids, I want to teach you another lesson. Delayed obedience is disobedience. Do you get it? Many a times, your mom and dad will ask you to do something, you will say, wait, wait. That waiting sometimes can bring all the disaster. That's why I'm saying, delayed obedience is disobedience. Obedience is costly, disobedience is deadly. Try to learn these lessons, my friends, very important. That's the second dream. Now, I'm coming to the third dream, nineteenth verse. When Herod died, behold, an angel of the Lord appeared in a dream to Joseph in Egypt, saying, rise, take the child and his mother, and go to the land of Israel, for those who sought the child's life are dead. And he arose and took the child and his mother, and went to the land of Israel. Here, we don't see that urgency. Probably, the dream came in the night, in the morning, he might have said, hey, that fellow is dead, man, we have to go back. Probably, they might have taken one or two days to pack up things. And again, look at this statement. Here, the angel is not saying, go to Bethlehem. The angel is not saying, go to Nazareth, go to Israel. The angel is not saying, go to Nazareth, go to Israel. No, I want to tell you one thing, God's directions are progressive many a times. They would, man, I'll need, Adipin, Chedap, Puduchala, Sarlu, Kramakramanga, Unta. You go there, then I will give you the next level. You go there, then I'll give you the next level. Can I, my, my, under, so you give me the complete blueprint, then I will decide. And do you know what's the statement you make at that time? Clarity, lead, brother, clarity, lead. Clarity, lead. And the, eh, cheat, lead. Clarity, Akkadi, Keltavas, they could, they rather. Akkadi, Keltavas, and the, they would, Akkadi, Raman, not. So these people got up and went to Israel, Israel border killer, I don't know how many, how long they traveled. I think, I mean, Dante, when, I'm reading verse twenty second. When he heard that Archelaus was reigning over Judah in place of his father, he was afraid to go there and being warned in a dream, this is the fourth dream, he withdrew to the district of Galilee. That means, they would, Chep, not, L, M, D, Israel, Kelly, P, A, D, Israel, Kelly, you don't, not, Eka, Etla, G, O, D, K, N, N, Ah, you don't, N, G, A, O, T, B, T, L, M, K, L, D. N, N, M, D, B, T, L, M, K, L, D, N, T, Y, N, D, K, L, D, M, I, K, O, L, L, N, D, K, D, G, G, O, D, B, R, D, N, D, K, N, D, K, L, D, N, 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 Go to Galilee. Go there. Beautiful. God's direction is always progressive. So four dreams, we can learn from it. So according to Ma- Ma- Mark six, three, I'm very quickly finishing up the life of uh, Joseph. According to Mark six, three, I'm reading Mark six, three, is not this the carpenter, the son of Mary? And remember, Mary and Joseph, Virgin Mary gave birth to Jesus Christ. Kanye, Anna Maria, Yes, Prabhu, K, Garban, N, Chidi. After that, Mary and Joseph, they lived together as wife and husband, they have at least six children, yes, at least, look at them. Brother number one, James, brother number two, Joseph, brother number three, Judas, brother number four, Simon, are not his sisters here with us, at least two sisters, N, N, plural, under, G, O, T. So Mary and Joseph, they had seven children, one as a virgin, the other six as wife and husband. So according to the, what you call legendary stories and other things, you know, Joseph might have died before thirty-five or something like that. Now remember, Joseph was seventeen or eighteen when Jesus was born. And when he died, he was thirty-five. Je- Jesus, he crossed the age of twelve at least, because we have Joseph. So Jesus must be thirteen, fourteen or fifteen when Joseph died. Let's take fifteen, that's the maximum possibility. So Jesus was there when Joseph, yeah, Joseph died when Jesus was fifteen years old. This is how I imagine, one day, Mary calls Jesus, Babu, Jesus, Mama, come here. What are your brothers doing? Mama, they are sleeping, your sisters, they already slept, Mama, sit down, Ba, want to talk to you, tell me. Babu, your father is a very hardworking fellow. Yes, Mama, I saw him, I saw him in the workshop, I know. He works a lot and gives us the needed food, Ma. Ah, I know what you're trying to say. What did you understand, Babu? Very simple, Mummy. Till now daddy was bringing all the food. Now it's my responsibility. Daddy taught me, he might have called Abba, Abba taught me how to make a chair, how to make a window, how to make a court, I know. From tomorrow I'll start working. From fifteen to thirty, for fifteen years, he was taking care of his family. That's why he's called carpenter. People know him as carpenter. That means Joseph raised his son in such a way, Mary raised his son, her son in such a way, he was able to take the responsibility from teenage. What about you? What about you? My friends, we have a lot to learn as parents and as kids from the life of Joseph. If you are able to glean these things and if you are able to apply, what a blessed family we would be. It's my prayer, my friends, that each one of us should learn, whether you are a kid or a parent and apply it in your lives. We look to Lord in prayer. Father, we thank you so much for this character, Joseph. Jesus, when you are on this earth, you called him Abba. Now I know, Master, what a great person he is, Joseph. What a great character he is. Though you have given us a very little, it's a window that sheds a lot of light as far as this character. I thank you, Lord, for Joseph. Help us to learn from this man. There are a lot of kids sitting here, listening to this. Help them to learn from Joseph. Help them to learn from Mary. Help them to learn from Daniel, David, Samuel and the Old Testament, Joseph, they were all kids. When they did great things for you. Lord, they can, they can, provided they are inclined towards you. Lord, in the same way, I want to pray for the parents, they have a huge responsibility to raise the kids the way you wanted them. Give them that wisdom, give them that patience, oh, Master. Help them to realize that is the priority. Lord, we commit each one of us into hands, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I just now saw this man. Sai. Had I seen him in the beginning, I wouldn't have been preaching like this.
Hope we learnt a lot of things today, especially about the parental responsibility, uh, because we, we believe in higher purpose and higher meaning and higher responsibility. So with help of God, uh, we should be able to do that, to fulfill our responsibilities in this life, especially as, as parents. So, uh, one second, thank you for your patience, so we'll have dinner, but before that, we'll have one closing, a quick, uh, closing song and a prayer.